All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Please get a roll call.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Patel? Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Ms. Yu?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We have one board member who is present via video conference in order for her to be able to participate. I'd like to ask for a motion to allow Ms. Oliver to participate in the meeting electronically. She's electronically participating due to illness. So we had a motion.
Seconded.
And a second, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
And Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Stacy, you are now a part of the meeting and can speak.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent, well, actually, before we go there. I'd like to actually move that we move some items on the agenda around. We'd like to be able to move the unfinished business item for the review of the draft strategic plan so that it comes after the public comments to allow those who are with us virtually to be able to present. And then it's mentioned twice in the agenda, but for the executive director evaluation and the closed session that goes along with it, we're going to move that to the end, item number nine. So that 7.3 will be taking place at the end of the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as revised, as mentioned?
Yes, moved.
Thank you, Maura.
Moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, Barbara. I think we can do a voice vote for that. All of a favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any votes?
Jay, sorry. Because we have someone remote attended, everything has to be a roll call vote.
Stacy, we have to count your votes, wait to do roll call, sorry. Please do a roll call.
All righty. Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to revise the agenda is approved. So the next item on the agenda is then the consent agenda. Before we move into the motion for that, is there any item anyone would like to ask be moved off the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Jamie, is there a second? Thank you, Barbara. Roll call again, please.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Next item, public comment, there are no public in the room. So we will move on. That puts us to the revised agenda for the review of the draft strategic plan. Kate, would you like to introduce the people we're going to present?
Sure. So I believe everyone at this point knows Amanda Standifer from Fast Forward Libraries, who's our strategic planning consultant. And she will be taking the board through the draft strategic plan. And then we also have three staff that are joining to help with the presentation from the strategic plan committee, including Lev Kalman, who is our adult services assistant manager, Aaron Ashman, who's an events production assistant, and Sarah Scotius, who's a technical services cataloging librarian. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Amanda so that she can start the presentation.
Awesome. Hi, everybody. It feels like yesterday and also a very long time ago that I was with all of you to do our retreat session, which we had such a great conversation. And our presentation tonight is to tell you where we're at with the plan and get your feedback about the draft in hopes of then adopting the plan tonight if we feel good about it and make some final decisions or next month if we still need to, you know, go through some revisions. I want to just remind us why we engaged in this process and say that, you know, for you as the board, it's important to have a document that helps you make decisions about the future of the library, helps you allocate resources. And your strategic plan is that North Star. It's the path that you will take that will guide how you govern the library over the next three years. For the staff, they want to know what are things we're going to be working on? What is the impact we are striving towards? And your plan articulates that. And for your community, they want to know what can we expect from the library in the future? And the plan is that document they can look to to see how their tax dollars are going to be invested. I'll pause for a second and make sure everybody's seeing my screen and hearing me, okay? Good? Okay, awesome. So I want to thank our planning team. We had a really great group of folks, very robust participation. It was really a rewarding process. I hope they felt that way, too. We, you know, spent a lot of time listening and debating and all of those things. And everyone really contributed, and I appreciate all of their participation. I want to remind you what we have done as part of our process in our learn phase, which started oh so many months ago. We spent some time getting feedback from trustees, from staff members, from the community, looking at demographic trends, looking at library data trends. We put all of that together in the learning report that is kind of the basis for the rest of the discussions that we had during our process. In our dream phase, we did our board and staff retreat sessions where we got deeper feedback based on the lived experience of all of you with the library, your expertise, your support over the years, to start to narrow where we thought we had opportunity to make an impact. And now we are in the last phase of the process, the do phase, which is where we're showing you where we're at. And then we're going to start talking about transitioning to implementation. So this is kind of how the plan is structured, how it's come together. The vision and mission, of course, are those core target statements that ground the entire process. And we're going to talk about those in just a little bit because we have some options that we want to bring to you for consideration that are strategic directions. And we have three of those are kind of our big containers of work that we want to focus on, our priorities. There's goals within each of those. And then when we get to implementation, we will move to the more specific activities, which will be kind of that iterative process of seeing what is the work we're going to do on an annual basis in order to make progress towards our goals? And then evaluation and reporting, so the metrics that will show our progress and then how often and what data do we report? So we're kind of right here. We have a transition to implementation. I'll talk more about that after we talk about the plan itself. But the plan itself is really supposed to articulate kind of those high level pieces, the vision, mission, strategic directions, and goals. The other implementation pieces are internal kind of operationalizing documents for the plan itself. So the plan that you received has these higher level elements to it. We're going to walk through with the help of staff here each of the three strategic directions. They're going to kind of talk about what these mean to them. You can follow along in the actual plan document that you have. We'll start on page nine. And my hope here, we're not going to read things to you, you can read yourself. But after each staff member kind of talks about their strategic direction, we'll pause for a second, see if you have any feedback, any suggested changes. We're open to that tonight. And then after we go through the strategic directions, we'll talk about narrowing down and hopefully finalizing the vision and mission statements. So I'm going to turn it over to Lev first, who is going to talk about connect with our community. So go ahead, Lev.
Hi, everyone. As Kate mentioned, my name is Lev Kalman. I am assistant manager of adult services and I oversee our adult programming at the library. I'm excited to talk about the first strategic direction of the proposed plan, which is connecting with our community and specifically how it pertains to our adult programming. Something that I personally love about library programs is their ability to inspire patrons to explore new ideas and perspectives, learn more about their community, and spark conversations. So I'm very proud of the wide variety of programming offered by our department, from technology lectures to seniors to classes on fermenting vegetables and dance programs highlighting different cultures. A library program is more than just an event. It fosters lifelong learning, cultural appreciation, and intellectual engagement. And by talking to our patrons and listening to their feedback, we ensure that our library remains relevant and accessible to all members of our community. For example, as a result of a patron request last year, we showed a documentary on the Vermeer exhibition at the Rijksmuseum in Amsterdam. Over 100 patrons attended the showing and we received a lot of very positive feedback. So I think this is a perfect example of how our programs reflect the interests and needs of our patrons, making them feel valued and engaged. Part of our upcoming strategic plan is to solidify the library as a primary hub for fulfilling the varied information needs of our community. So a strategic focus on programming will allow us to promote intellectual freedom and cultural understanding within our community. There are a few key outcomes that I envisioned from this strategic direction. The first being increased community engagement, the second enhanced patron satisfaction, and the third expanded reach and visibility. A strategic focus on programming not only aligns with our mission, but also reinforces the library's role as a vibrant community center for learning and exploration. And I am confident that by embracing this strategic direction, we will create meaningful experiences, foster lifelong learning, and strengthen our connection with the Northbrook community. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Lev. Does anybody have any questions, comments, suggestions on this strategic direction or the two goals under the strategic direction?
Amanda, it's Barbara. Just a quick question attached to the programming. Is the whole issue of evaluation? And how do you determine what programs are successful, which are not going to be repeated, et cetera?
Yes, for sure. And that's something that we'll dig into much deeper during the implementation process. So during the retreat, you'll remember, we talked about like, how will we know if we're successful? And so we've, you know, pulled all that data together and we've created some evaluation framework templates. And we really need to wait until we've started to build the activity plan in order to kind of match up what are those actual measures. I mean, Lev mentioned a couple of ways that we might measure success. So what you see in the actual plan on page nine is a couple of ideas of like our impact. But we don't get into the specific like, how do we measure awareness? We'll wait until we get to implementation for that. Thank you. Yeah, anybody else, any questions, suggestions? Thank you, Barbara. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to the next strategic direction and hand it over to Sarah.
Hello, everyone. As Kate introduced me, I'm Sarah Scotius. I am the technical services cataloging librarian and I'm also one of the co-chairs of the EDI committee. And so I'm speaking today for our second strategic direction, which is embedding equity, diversity, and inclusion in all operations. When we started the strategic plan process, we knew that we wanted to be incorporating the work that we are also doing with Lily Zhang and the EDI report that came out of that work, which I'm also participating in. And so this is kind of a combination of that work that we've already done and then what Amanda and Fast Forward have been working on as far as what she went over earlier with the community survey, the staff and board retreats, and getting all of that kind of combined together into this direction. And so with these three goals, we're really focusing a lot on improving staff capacity, which is the work we've already been working on, improving staff morale and retention, and having just an overall like focus on accessibility for both our physical and our digital spaces. There's a couple of different ways that we've like kind of discussed that what those types of implementation might look like, like doing a pay equity audit or doing a staffing analysis to make sure that workload is evenly distributed between staff members. It could be part of this kind of, it kind of links in with the other two strategic directions and that, that like with the programming or with collections, that not only are we reviewing that to make sure that we're serving the patrons from that perspective, but that we're also putting an EDI lens over that. So we're considering different identity lenses or considering accessibility. So with like the collection development policy or with a website redesign, that we're keeping all of those things in mind so that we are embedding EDI in all operations.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah. Does anybody have questions or suggestions on this strategic direction or the three goals listed here?
I'm not, I don't know. I'm not sure I'm loving it. Just, I'll just like speak my mind. I'm not sure. It's like, it makes sense to me, but I've been like through this journey with like the EDI work we did and this. If I, if I covered the top, I would, if they just showed me the three goals, I would have never imagined that's about EDI. So I'm just worried that someone from the outside is going to have trouble making that connection. I don't know. I don't know. That's just my first impression, like.
Does my impression, I don't know if this is similar to yours or not, is that it seems all very inwardly focused rather than sort of a broader focus?
Yeah.
And that might be intentional, but I'm just wondering if it is broad enough. But I sort of jumped in.
No, 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 not at all. Just, I'm just having a hard time kind of making that more direct connection between the headline and the.
If you see it says in all operations, does that make a difference? Because it is a community.
I mean, so a couple of things. One is that, yes, it is internally facing and that is intentional. That's pretty standard in most strategic plans that we work on now where there's, you know, we know that like core operations, strategy, and culture are kind of the three legs of the stool to, for success. And so to me, this is like within the cultural piece of how staff work together. And these goals really pretty directly came from Lily Zhang's work as well. So I want to say it's like normal to have kind of internally facing goals like this, a pillar that focuses in this way. And I also see what you're saying. So I'm curious if Kate has anything that she'd like to say kind of related to how these goals were developed because they were kind of like leapfrogged over from the Lily Zhang work into the strategic planning process? Yeah, I think just what I'm hearing Jamie say is it feels like there's a disconnect between the strategic direction and the goals. And so I'm wondering if we need to keep the, as Lily would say, the spirit of the goal, but make the wording maybe match a little bit more to what the strategic direction is? So maybe it's not necessarily that, because, I mean, Jamie, if I'm hearing you correctly, it isn't necessarily that there's an issue with what the goals are. It's more like they don't feel connected as much. And so to tie the two together more clearly and how we've worded it, I don't know. Is that?
Yeah, this kind of, like I said, like I think it makes sense to me because I've read like all the Lily Zhang's analyses and everything. I'm just wondering if someone else just looked at this and they would be like, why would the line staff's responsibility have to do with EDI? I mean, you know, like I feel like there's a little bit like, it's not as.
We need to connect the dots for people.
As, yeah, not as connected. I don't know how to, yeah, but I think you get what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. The goals are all right and they're like, that represents kind of how I see things, but I'm just coming with someone that doesn't have that context. I don't know how.
Yeah. I mean, they really are very much organizational development goals with the lens of EDI. And so maybe we need to describe it more in that way. So it's not just embed EDI, it's develop the organization with a lens of equity, diversity, and inclusion.
I agree with you, yeah. But, yeah.
Maybe let's not label this embed EDI. What maybe have that be an organizational development or?
With an EDI.
EDI.
Embedded, like, like just because I completely agree with you. I think this is really about organizational development. And that, but I think the last one has to do with like how we're outreach in. But I agree with, I feel like what we're saying is not EDI. It's about like where we have this EDI kind of embedded and focus of the operation and the organizational development. It just, I don't know, I just didn't.
This is false advertising.
I agree with Jamie. I mean, I think the three bullet points are solid. And it is also a good idea to embed EDI into all operations, but they don't seem to connect.
Yeah. So would you guys be okay with us taking this feedback back and kind of reworking the header for this particular section? Is that okay with all of you?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So we'll talk with the planning team about that. Can we circle back really quick to Maura's comment about this feels very internally facing? I know you addressed it, but I just want to make sure. Maura, does that make sense for you? Or did you have any follow up on this?
It's just the last one, I guess, is the more sort of external one. And. No, I guess, I'm sorry, I was pausing, you weren't.
Okay, you were, okay, I was like, oh, did we lose sound?
I was just rereading it again. I think just to sort of, to piggyback on what Jamie said that the. Okay, yep, there we go. No, I guess it's there. It does seem, it just seems a.
I just wanted to mention that it's not on the screen, but in the, in the piece we are looking at, there is a point, there is a bullet point that is external focus on, under our impact. And if you read to the left under. Just lost it. Yeah, embed equity, diversity, and inclusion in operations, which sort of describes it. It does, it does mention the community. In fact, fairly extensively. So I do feel like there, it's a mix of internal and external.
Sure. Yeah, so organizational development might not be the right label either. Maybe it's just like being a strong organization or, I don't know. We'll take this back and think about it.
And the, the create spaces to belong? Is that next on the?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't gotten there yet.
That also seems to tie into what we're saying. And, and I don't know if we want to make a direct link to that, but that sort of seems to be what I was sort of saying was, was missing from the EDI. Maybe I'm just sort of trying to put it somewhere that doesn't belong.
That's the next direction I'm going to get to, though.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, and there are distinctions. We'll talk about that in a second, but I see what you're saying for sure.
Okay.
Can I just make one last comment on the strategic direction? It's almost as if you could take that header and make it as one of the goals, but redefine the direction.
Okay.
Because I think one of the goals is for EDI to become embedded in the operations.
Okay. So Jay, you're saying add that as like a fourth goal and change the header?
Yeah. I mean, to describe the strategic direction in another way, that's closer to the paragraph.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Okay, we'll work on that one, so thank you. And then our next strategic direction, and now I'm on page 11 of your actual plan document, and I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to talk about.
Hi, I'm Aaron. I work in events production department. I've been an employee at the library for 27 years and I grew up in Northbrook, so I do feel a great sense of connection to the community. With our third strategic direction, we have create spaces to belong. Our desired outcomes are that patrons and staff feel a sense of belonging at the library and that the library is responsive to meet the needs of the community. A large draft goal here is to reimagine our spaces to increase flexibility and opportunities to explore and connect. Given our position as a community leader within Green Initiatives, we'll also always be thinking about ways to incorporate our best practices in that area as well. With this, we'll be thinking about updated physical spaces and updated website and just overall ways that we can increase that personal touch that we can deliver. We want to also foster our library as a safe space for the community and staff as well. As a member of events production, which sees a large number of patrons pass through the auditorium and other programming, it's always my personal goal to be attentive and intentional with how I interact with patrons to give them that premium experience for any program that they're attending. As someone who's also a point person to monitor and see people in the ADA row throughout the auditorium, we're an organization that goes far beyond what a normal movie theater does to accommodate and personalize that exact needs of our patrons. I envision that type of personalization throughout all spaces in the library. Soon we'll be opening the auditorium to outside groups. And that is exactly the type of reimagining of spaces that we are trying to accomplish with this strategic direction. Maintaining top-notch customer service and being intentional about the layout of a library on each floor is going to go a long way to further our goals within this strategic direction and could deliver on the mission that we are trying to achieve. Thanks.
Yeah, awesome. All right, questions, comments, edits here?
Given that I have something to say about everything. I know in these times, it may not be something we want to necessarily emphasize, but the word safe. Cultivating, safe, inclusive, I don't know. I don't know if we can promise that, but just a thought.
It depends on your mission of safe.
That word has become somewhat politically a hot button.
So I'm hearing mixed feedback about including it or not. I definitely agree with the sentiment. And I will say when, when this comes up in other conversations, as it does at other places, that usually folks land on the like, let's be a little more conservative and stick with the inclusive and welcoming because we can't guarantee safe. It's a public building. Other libraries do feel very strongly that it is something that they want to talk about and engage with our community about. So I kind of heard a little 50/50 there. What are you guys thinking?
Can I say one thing, Amanda? I just want to say that I use that language primarily because a lot of the staff during this process have used that type of language. So despite my own leanings on how I feel about that kind of stuff, I just want to say that typically I use that language in this particular scenario because I heard a lot of staff using that language and kind of wanted it to be in there. So you just want to know how staff feel about it, that's the way.
Yeah. And also, if we were to add it to this second gold here, goal here, we're not making promises. We're saying we're going to cultivate a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment. So in that case, it's not like we will be safe. It's we're going to cultivate a feeling of being safe. So what do you think? I'm also going to just add Kelly is not here tonight because she's on spring break, doing fun things in Florida. But I know as the person in charge of the library's safety and security, she did feel strongly that that wasn't something that we should include because it is something that while we certainly strive to do, it is really challenging. Aaron is correct. It did come up a lot with staff in the strategic retreat. And I will also say that knowing some of the challenges we've had here in the area, like the shooting in Highland Park obviously comes to mind, the swatting attacks last fall, the book challenge stuff. It is something that we want. Everyone has different lived experiences that they are bringing with them to the table. So even striving to create a feeling of safety for some people, that might just not be possible. And we will do everything we can to, you know, make the building as secure as we can. And we want people to feel belonging here. But that is something that I know Kelly, I hope I'm representing her words correctly. So Anna, if you have other things that you would want to add that you feel like I'm missing from conversations that we've had with Kelly, please let me know.
I do not have anything to add, but I do think that adding the word safe is misleading.
I think that since we possibly mean it in the sense of being inclusive and welcoming, that those two words.
Safe.
Emotionally.
Physically.
I was going to say, there's two different aspects we're talking about. One is physically safe.
Right.
The other is emotionally safe.
Right.
And I think the two get confused when you see the word.
Yep.
You know, which one are you referring to? So it isn't clear. And I think the inclusive and welcoming focus on the emotional aspect. And I think that's clearer than the word safe, which, you know, all of a sudden taints it with some political leaning dependent upon, you know, which side of the spectrum you lie on.
And I think that, I agree. I think that it's a problematic word. And I think that we want the staff to feel safe, obviously, coming here. But when we talk about feeling safe emotionally and it's a, it's a place of information, I think people do need to get uncomfortable with being around opinions that differ from theirs. And so the term safety, and maybe I'm diving too deep here, doesn't seem appropriate because I think we want them to be exposed to different opinions and that might make them feel unsafe from time to time. So I think using the word is problematic. Right. So I think that, yeah, we, not everyone has to feel comfortable all the time and that should not be our goal, I think.
But I do think in this, in the sense that I think most of us mean it, I believe that inclusive and welcoming covers the waterfront.
Right.
Yeah, that would be my opinion.
I think our goals for staff is different from our goals for patrons. Those are going to be, they're not always going to be aligned.
Maybe not.
And I think that's okay.
I just want to say one last thing. We didn't use the word. I I just want to say one last thing. We didn't use the word safe, uh, safe anywhere on the slide. That was just me talking and reiterate. So I do think that that matters because we may not use the word safe in the final document, but I was just kind of, you know, I was trying to echo the staff once again, more than my own personal opinions, but we don't use the word safe anywhere in the slide. So just just for the purposes of the strategic plan, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like we're good with where we're at with this. All right, awesome. Okay, so the next part is to actually go back to page 11 in the document and think about vision and mission. And you'll remember from the board retreat that we talked about vision being kind of usually more of a short kind of catchphrase, aspirational, here's what we are hoping to achieve in the community. Something that people can look at and say, oh, yeah, I want to know more about that, or I I I feel compelled to be part of this. Whereas your mission is more concrete, usually longer, a little more boring, descriptive of here's the work that we do in order to get to our aspiration. So the, we talked about this at the board retreat and then went back and drafted a a series of statements that the planning team has narrowed down to what is on the screen in front of you here. Um, I will say that um it's kind of popular, and I'm using that in quotes, um, to use kind of the three word vision statement. It's very flexible in terms of how you might use it for marketing and communication purposes. So for example, on number two, if you say connect, engage, belong, or however you end up with something like that, if that's the direction you want to go, um, you know, people, that means different things to different people. And and that's what's lovely about it is people can kind of um flex it depending on what they they're looking for in the library. So that that is kind of a popular thing. Um, the number three vision on here is your current tagline, which could also be a vision that where community happens. Again, getting into that spirit of bringing people together. And then um you've got several mission statement options there as well. So my hope tonight is that you all can come to consensus about one of these statements. Or if you have slightly different suggestions for something else, we can um play around with that a little bit, too. We don't want to belabor this. So if if you don't feel strongly or come to consensus about something, we'll talk about a process we can go through offline to narrow this down so you can approve it next month. So I want to open it to all of you, um, starting with vision. Is one of these statements um speaking to you? And which one is it? And and tell us a little bit about why you like it.
I like two and three. So um I've always liked three, where community happens. Um, but engaging or engage and connecting, including belonging, um, really resonates with me as well. I think it captures the direction that we're hoping to go, or at least that I think we're hoping to go. Um. The more engaged, connected, inclusive, engaged community, it seems um. It just sort of begs a question more than what? So, um.
Yeah.
It sort of asks more questions than I think it answers. So I like two the most, then I really like three. But if we're looking for change, then I um I really like two.
Okay. Not necessarily looking for change, just to throw that out there. And the including belonging, we had a slash there because um we thought those might be a couple of options. We didn't think we would have four words. We really wanted to possibly narrow it to the three. It's easier to remember three words than four.
I think I like the ing ones, connect, engage, belong.
Okay.
Thank.
The adverbs?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Others have feelings about any of these?
So I'm gonna um have a little contrary in view. All of those mission statements touch on community, and they touch on a library's core mission of learning. I don't see the word learning uh in any of those vision statements. Um, they could be the vision statements for the local YMCA um, or the park district.
Yeah, good point.
Um. I don't quite know where to land with that, but um when I think of a library, yes, I think of a community. But a library is to inspire learning and provide information. And again, none of those draft vision statements mentioned that at all.
Yeah, good point.
And I would add not only, but we're part of the world now. Children who are coming into the library are connecting not only with their community, but the world via the technology bearing materials. And so I think connecting with community is smaller than, I think, the actual vision and practices. I I would like to see something that there's citizens of, we're all citizens of the world now, not just a small community.
I, my initial was liking two um and keeping three in some ways, but like I completely agree with you after you said that. I would
Yeah.
like to um incorporate both the ideas, learning and inspiring, like the concept of in in the in the vision, I guess.
I mean, when I think of the vision for the, when I, this is just me, I think about my vision would be a space in which people can find out whatever they need to know. Which isn't really a very good vision statement. I wouldn't use that. But but I mean, that's when I think about a library. And I think about what's, you know, what's uh my best platonic ideal of a library. It's a place where you can go to find out whatever you need to know.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm not saying to use that. I'm just saying if there could be some reference to
Yep.
library as an, as a repository for knowledge and ways to find out what you need to know, that should, I think, be in any vision for a library.
I think I liked your your initial statement of learning rather than knowledge. That I think that just being a repository for knowledge is maybe limiting. I like the idea of learning that it's more active. But I think you're, the fact that learning is sort of absent from it isn't uh really.
Or just the idea of knowledge or information. I mean, information, that's what a library provides.
Okay. Anybody else? Sounds like we have some more work to do. So if you have other comments that we can consider for developing new options, now's the time to give that feedback.
I would jump in and say the third is probably my least favorite. I think it works as a tagline, but there's nothing about that that inspires vision for me. And I will own that I'm the person at the retreat that said we needed to be more audacious in our vision statement and think bigger about who we are and what we do. I think it was Janet's point, maybe that this could be a YMCA tagline. It's also reporting, like, this is a fact. We know that this is where community happens. It's not saying about what we're doing to stretch and grow and how we help community members stretch and grow. Also, Jay, when words have an ing, they're a gerund, not an adverb. And if I don't say that, I'm going to lose my mind. I'm so sorry.
Fair enough.
See, lifelong learning is happening at the library board.
Love it. All right, anybody else comments on on vision? Thank you for this. All right, so great feedback. We'll go back and work on this a little bit more. In the mission statement, are there things that you like about these statements? Is there one that kind of stands out to you? Or do you have other feedback that that we need to consider? It's okay if you hate all of them.
No, no, no.
Of the three, I like the third the best because it has the fewest gerunds in it.
Okay.
And that is how you apply what you've just learned in real life. Beautifully done, Jay.
Anybody else like three, or you like a different one?
I like three as well because it's it's giving equal weight to fostering community, inspiring learning, sharing ideas. Um, whereas opposed to two is it sort of puts fostering community first and foremost and and the other things are sort of um secondary.
So what is, what does foster community look like? What what does that mean?
I think it speaks to creating that um connection between people. How I interpret it is we foster, like, community is not just your neighbors, but also um about how we make Northbrook a community and not just a bunch of people living in a geographically closed area. And so to me, what fostering community means, it means helping people feel connected to the geographic location that they've chosen to live in. Um, but also it's about fostering a feeling of belonging and connectedness. So that is, I don't know if that is how everyone is looking at it, but that's how I was looking at it.
I'm gonna sort of piggyback on what Barbara had said earlier, that what seems to be missing from the mission statement is that is our role in a, in the, in the bigger world. That that it isn't just about um
Us.
Us, us thirty seven thousand or whatever we are, that it's a, it's it should also be about making connections to the larger world.
Okay. That's fair. Anybody else thoughts on the mission statements? Any of them, three or otherwise?
Are we married to starting them all with we?
Not exactly, but that is kind of the trend right now, which is why you see them all starting with three. Do you have another suggestion?
I'm concurrently doing strategic planning at my workplace, too, and we're, so we're working on these same sorts of things, not a library. Uh, but the kind of language we're using is, let's take three, we would be more likely to say fostering community, inspiring learning, sharing ideas.
Gotcha.
I mean.
Yeah.
Gerunds, Jay.
I guess it may depend in this case. I I love that. Um, but we may want to see where we land with vision because we want to differentiate them enough. And to me, the mission is like, what do we do as an organization um to get to that vision? So that's typically, at least why I've always started them with we. Um, but that, this might be better conversation when we see kind of where we land with the vision statement.
I know, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, so I I definitely also, out of the three, love three the most. But just kind of a little bit nitpicking, out of the three, like foster community, inspire learning. I'm not sure I would keep share ideas in the same level of these. And just because if if you just kind of look at that, it's almost like we're kind of just focused on the do. But it's like our core is really, we spend so much money on resources, like, like that's why people come is because we have the stuff. The stuff is like, is the, is the resources, the the people, it's like everything we have, but like, I don't know. I just like, I feel like we need to come back a little bit to the core as well.
Yeah.
With the third.
Yeah.
The word, yeah.
That makes total sense. And I would say um in a lot of, I mean, a library's mission statement could literally be like, we provide access to we like this stuff, right? Um, because that is the core of what we do. So yes, you're right, it's missing there. So we'll, we'll consider that as well.
We provide.
I think also Jamie, just to, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I just was saying, we provide access to the world through materials, programs, something like that.
Um, yeah, yep. Okay, go ahead, Kate.
Um. I'm sorry, I'm writing down what Barbara just.
Me too.
I thought that was really good. And so I was gonna say, um, just to Jamie's point of sharing ideas, I think um I'm totally seeing what you're saying. When I was reading it and how I was thinking of it was, we share ideas through our materials, through programs, through like that the sharing isn't necessarily happen person to person, although it could be, but that we share ideas through all these different mediums. But what I hear from you is that that isn't coming across in this.
Right, and that's
So I think that that's helpful.
Expertise of our staff is like
Yeah.
all the intellect, intellect that makes it possible. I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, that's very well put.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Okay, anybody else? All right, you've given us great feedback to go back and um do some, some more brainstorming, kind of tweaking of the language. We'll bring it back. You'll have the opportunity to comment again. Hopefully, uh, we'll be a little further along, and you'll feel pretty good about where we're at um next month. Um, I want to just kind of start to wrap this up a little bit by saying that once um you all feel good about the plan and adopt it, we will move to implementation. And and this is a transition period because planning is different than implementation. So we will kind of like stop with the planning and and start to design that implementation process. And what that means is for libraries, three different things, having an activity plan that guides the day to day work that everyone is doing, how it helps advance or work towards the goals, um, how we measure success, so having that framework for the data that we're gathering. And then how do we report that um that data on what kind of timeline, to which audiences? And so that will all happen after you approve the plan. We don't want to get the cart before the horse here. So once we get to implementation, probably later next month, um, actually, I think we already have that meeting scheduled, which we can move forward, um, depending on where we're at with the approval process. Um, but this then is what is ongoing through the life of the plan, like repeating this process of looking at the activities we're doing, reviewing the data, making adjustments, and then reporting on that progress. Um, and then talking about like what else might we need to do? That's the cycle, that continuous improvement cycle that happens to keep the plan alive and make sure that you're on track. So anybody else have any other questions? Thank you again for your feedback. Thank you to the staff that were here to talk about um the different strategic directions. I appreciate it. It's been a very rewarding process. I'm really happy with where you're at. And I feel like we're really close on almost the the final plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to everyone for staying with us for the past hour.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, everybody, I'm gonna drop off now. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Hey, so that finishes, I guess, the review draft strategic plan. No motion at this point, so we'll table any motions to the presentation at the next meeting.
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. I think that um this is an opportunity to soar. To to recognize the importance of what we do and how we do it and who does it. And these all feel grounding rather than
Aspirational.
Aspirational, that's exactly right. And I I think that it, I don't like to use the word common, but I don't want to do what everybody else does. I like the idea of how how do we express in this format the the greatness of what we do and the, I don't know, I think this is just kind of not aspirational.
Um, Barbara, could I ask just a follow up on that? When you say aspirational, are you talking about with the vision, mission, strategic direction and or goals? All of it or just parts?
No, no, I I just think that the vision and the mission, I every time I see, you know, we foster. I don't care if everybody is doing it. The fact is we do much more than foster. Foster is, and I, I don't know, I just, I think there are, there is language that can best better represent who we are and what we do and what we offer. That's my comment.
Great.
Other thoughts? Um, with that in mind, then I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be staff reports. Um, we're gonna have Kate and then is Kim Hedlund gonna be presenting?
Yeah, I'm gonna go get her.
Yes, Anna's gonna go get her. So while she's grabbing Kim, I'm gonna just do my quick updates. Um, so we have a number of dates that I had in my report. Um, but one of the things that didn't have a date that I wanted to just uh mention verbally to the board is that we have restarted the transcriptions, um, the recordings for Northbrook Voices. This is a longtime partnership that we've had with the Historical Society. Pre pandemic, they did all of the recordings, and then things kind of shifted a little, um, and things were put on pause. And now, after talking with the Historical Society, um, we are going to start having some of our staff do recordings. And we would love to have all of the board members come and share their experiences of living. And we would love to have all of the board members come and share their experiences of living and or working in Northbrook. So um I had put information, Lev, who we just heard speak, um is the lead on managing that project. And so if you are interested and willing, um you can reach out to him or you can reach out to me and I can put you in touch with him. And I see that Kim just got here, so I'm gonna pause my stuff and let her talk about the wonderful and exciting world of non resident fee calculations.
Yes.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I'm Kim Hegland, I'm the circulation manager, and I have been here just about ten months. So um and I'm gonna discuss the non resident fee card. It is something that we uh decide on a on a yearly basis, what percentage of taxes we're going to be charging non resident cardholders to make sure it aligns with what the taxes that we are charging our Northbrook cardholders. So there's multiple ways to figure it out, but I I really appreciate our way of doing it where we actually charge the percentage that our Northbrook residents pay. So it's based upon your taxes that you do on your um on your taxable, I wanted to write to get it right, equalized assessed valuation of your property. So whatever you pay for your assessed property, we take a percentage of that, which is roughly point three one two percent and kind of figure out the math from there. So um these include like homes in Mission Hills, the um kind of the what is it, the southwest side of Northbrook Court, there's the neighborhood there that is all non resident um unincorporated areas of Northbrook. Am I causing confusion? I want to make sure.
No.
Okay, and I know you do this every year, so um but it's actually kind of nice. Uh, one of the statistics that I found um with our partnership with the district schools, we had registered a hundred and sixty four students for cards. And of that, we actually have three hundred and eighty eight cards for youths under the age of eighteen that um are able to use the library, and they do. They checked out almost fifteen thousand pieces of material last year for school or reading. So those are our cards are being used for these kids. We also have two hundred and eighty four other residents who pay for the use of the library, and they check out over thirteen thousand pieces of material. So they are using the cards. Um, so we have roughly about six hundred and seventy two cards. Um, and again, I know Kate put it in this nice little memorandum with the administrative codes for the state. Um, does anyone have any questions about it or?
Do you do you get much feedback from um the residents who are paying the fees directly?
Um, we do. Some of them aren't aware that they have to pay if they assume that the library is part of their area. But when you explain that you're actually paying the county and not Northbrook. So their um unincorporated areas um aren't aware that their police department is actually the uh Cook County Sheriff, or they're not aware that their water comes from the county. So some of those things aren't necessarily figured out into their tax bill, so it's something we do have to educate our patrons on. We offer it in a six month increment or a twelve month increment, so it kind of gives them the opportunity to see if this is something that they will use more regularly. So we do do um like kind of a split assessment for them. But we do get feedback and we do let them know, go to your boards and your HOAs and let them know that you're interested.
There aren't any um uh senior uh living facilities that are in unincorporated, are there? So that wouldn't be something.
Not that I'm aware of, no. Um, it's around like the largest areas around Mission Hills.
Okay.
And then around Northbrook Court, and then some little spatterings of homes.
Okay. What about renters? How do you?
Yeah, so renters um would be charged fifteen percent of their rent.
Rent, okay. And then for the um, the students are eligible for a card regardless of whether or not they're incorporated or unincorporated.
That is correct. The state of Illinois, as well as the board passed it, anyone under the age of eighteen is entitled to a card. We want to make them avid readers.
Just out of curiosity, is that for just the public schools or is that for the private schools in Northbrook as well?
Um, I believe the.
It's not really based on the schools, it's based on where they live. So if a student lives in Northbrook and goes to a private school either in Northbrook or elsewhere, they would be eligible. But like if, for instance, hypothetically, there was a student that went to State Norbert's and lived in, say, Glencoe, they would not be eligible for a Northbrook card, but if Glencoe had passed a similar provision, they would be eligible there.
But, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Any other questions before, thank you, Kim.
Oh, of course, thank you.
It's so clear, thank you. Problem, thank you.
And she didn't even break out the spreadsheets that they have, which are beautiful.
I did, I did print them though.
So, yeah. So a couple other things from my report that I wanted to draw the board's attention to. Um, I think everyone is aware that the eclipse is coming up on April eighth. Um, uh, everyone got their glasses already. It has been a very popular question um from patrons wanting eclipse glasses, signing up for the programs, we're pretty much maxed out on everything. And we will be doing a viewing event here at the library on the eighth. Two oh seven is the time of the ninety three percent um of the eclipse that will be, we were not reaching a hundred percent totality here, but we'll be getting pretty close. Um, and so if any board members are in the area and you want to like watch the eclipse with a group, we are going to be um doing that in Tower Rink, and then we'll also be live streaming it in Pollock, so you are welcomed and invited. I will not be here to say hi because I am going down to Carbondale with my husband and my sister and her family um so that we can experience totality. But um if you would like to come here, we would love to have you join us. Um, and then coming up in May, there's a fair amount happening. As you know, we uh the board is choosing to do our tour at Glenvo Glenview Library this year. And one thing I wanted to check in with everyone on is, we'd like to move the time up um so that we don't have to, you know, have dinner super late after and do it at five thirty. Um, I wanted to just check and make sure that that time would be okay for everyone. Seeing nodding heads.
I sent you an email, but I think it'll be fine.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, sorry, Janet.
I know I have a.
It is May seventh, and you have a performance, I believe.
Concert that night, um but I can, I'm at a, I will try and um make whatever part of it I can, so um
Okay.
tour, I'll make the tour. If I can make dinner, I'll make dinner. So just, I can do, I'll make whatever I work with.
Sounds great. Thanks, Maura. And then a few days after that, um on Friday, May tenth, which is also our staff development day, we do have uh our first summer outreach event. Um, every year, the Village does Flamingo Friday where they pass out flamingos. And we always have a table there, and so normally, um, you know, different staff go, Linda and I have gone, Kelly and Anna, um every year, different people, but I thought that perhaps it's a really fun event. It's from five to seven, and so if any board members would be interested in attending, um, we would.
It's five to seven.
I'm gonna jump in.
Five to seven.
I'm on the commission, and we're the ones who do that event, the Flamingo Friday kickoff. It is a lot of fun, and it's right across the parking lot, just behind the Village Hall. And we have, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have the library, we're gonna have lots of different people and groups in the community um with all of their information out and stuff for good.
And that's also at five thirty?
It's at five to seven PM.
Five to seven.
I have a tour at seven, so I could go there before him.
And again, it's just, everyone like, you know, light a candle for good, good weather, but um but it's just behind the Village Hall.
Yeah, it is, it, yeah, it's, I mean, all of the summer outreach events are fun, but this is really fun because you also get to meet a lot of new community members who are coming um to learn more about the community, and that's always really awesome, so.
Last year, we didn't have to have it in the Village Hall because of the weather, and it was still, but we are hoping for good weather, so.
Yes, it is a little bit more fun outside. It's a little bit cozy in the Village Hall. We have to move it inside. Just saying. Um, and then I am gonna be reaching out to the board. Uh, we had talked about having the board be more involved in staff development day. We're in the process of planning, so I will be reaching out with more information on that shortly. Um, and I'm also happy to answer any other questions uh from my report that anyone on the board has.
Any questions? All right, hearing none. Kate, thank you for that report. Um, the next item on the agenda is board member reports. So I will open up the floor if any board member would like to make a report.
Actually, I did have one thing. I'm just trying to, you know, um, I wanted to just say that um I went to the uh Chinese New Year, Year of the Dragon celebration, which was, wow, it was very full.
Yes.
And it was very fun, and we had a.
It was very fun.
Yeah, it was very fun, had a really good time and and enjoyed it um very much and I was a little worried there that people weren't all gonna be able to get into the auditorium, but they did it, so I just uh.
It was a great program.
The Lunar Year, it's wonderful.
Thank you, Janet. Um, anything else before we move on? All right, so we'll go on now to, in the unfinished business, seven point two, approve the annual fiscal year twenty five budget. So Anna presented the budget at the last meeting. There have been no changes from last month as done were requested. So before we um entertain a motion, is there any questions anyone would have now that they've had another month to review the budget? Any follow up, any clarification? All right, seen and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five budget as presented? Thank you, Jamie, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Maura, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Hsu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, the next item on the agenda is going to be new business. Eight point one, appoint board officer nominating committee. So according to the bylaws, the board president, that's me, gets to appoint three board members to serve as the nominating committee and put together a slate of officers that will be presented at the May meeting, not the April, but the May meeting. Um, there's typically a meeting in March and maybe another one in April to finalize the slate. Um, I'll ask if there are any volunteers who would like to sit on the committee this year.
I would be happy to.
Thank you, Barbara.
Sure.
Stacy sit on it because she's.
Well, Stacy, would you like to sit or would you prefer that I take the seat this year?
It doesn't matter to me. I've done it two years in a row. I don't want to rob someone of that experience.
Well, I will rob you of that experience, Stacy, so uh Maura, Barbara and I will be the committee this year. We'll have to see if we can set a date later.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'll send some information out tomorrow, and Jennifer will connect with everyone to find a date that works.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Civic Foundation request for a monument. There was a memo or a letter, whatever you'll call it, in the packet from Civic. Um, they are asking if we are interested in effectively partnering with them as they are looking for ways to commemorate memorialize the hundredth year of their festival. Their idea was to take assistance from us and to do some sort of artistic monument, a large plaque or something within the library vicinity, whether outside the building or inside the building to um recognize, memorialize the Civic Foundation. They're asking, without giving us any specifics, if we're interested. So it's hard to answer, but it seems like a well intentioned idea that is worth some additional um back and forth on. But I think in order for us to really make any sort of decision or probably need to have some more concrete ideas of what they're thinking of. It sounds like they're looking at doing some fundraising around whatever the idea is in order to kind of promote the Civic. Just not clear, Kate and I and Stacy were talking earlier this week, as the, you know, the scale and scope of what they're considering and how it would impact the library. You know, the idea of doing some sort of physical monument outside is nice, but where would it go? What would it be? They want to do something inside, are they talking about something that's, you know, sculptural? Is it something that would go on a wall? Are they looking at maybe, you know, if they want to incorporate some of the themes of what they do on a regular basis? You know, helping us with some of the planning we have. I mean, to me, if they were wanting to do something in the um childhood, young childhood area, um, that would, you know, memorialize Civic. I say that because to me Civic is Northbrook Days. You know, and it's very, you know, focused on the children. They do a lot of grants and scholarships within the community, so drawing on those themes. But anyway, I guess we want to know more about what they would like to do in order to give more concrete, kind of, here's what we would like to be able to do, or here's what we propose or whatnot. And so I think the answer we would like to give, unless others have different thoughts, is yes, we're interested. Can you give us a little bit more detail of what it is you're thinking?
I agree.
I would, I would agree. I I will say that although, you know, it's a lovely idea, my immediate thought was why, why us? I mean, I was a little bit sort of, why aren't, I mean, because I immediately thought, oh, I would see a something in the village green.
Yeah, but I think the park district is on there.
I did ask that question, Janet, when I met, when Civic asked to meet with me, and and they said, well, the library honestly was the very first place that everyone identified. Because we have such long ties with Civic, you know, the first, um, you know, they took sixteen years of Northbrook Day's funds and donated it to the library to help um with the foundation and building our first library. That's one of the reasons we have the Civic Room. Um, you know, we're working with them on the Zoom room now, but they feel like our partnership has gone back not a hundred years, because the library hasn't been in existence yet for a hundred years. But it has gone back so long that to them, we are a key community partner with them. And so that was where um everyone in the, when they talked about it at one of their Civic Foundation meetings, they said everyone immediately thought the library would be the perfect place. So I can't speak to why not elsewhere, but that was the um reasoning that they shared with why us.
That makes sense.
And we are pretty awesome.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not disputing that, I just.
Not to tutor on. Other thoughts?
No.
All right, so Kate, if you want to go back and say, yes, the board's interested.
Will do, and try to get a little bit more concrete ideas for what this might look like. And I did also um tell them that it would, you know, as, that we have a donation policy. So essentially, like whatever is donated, ultimately, they're donating it, but then it becomes part of the libraries and us to choose. Kind of, we wouldn't be obligated to have it for another hundred years. That isn't to say that we wouldn't keep it for another hundred years, but it would need to, um, they understand that we have policies around donations that that they would comply with, so.
Okay.
I'll report back next month.
Thank you. So unless there's further on that topic, uh we'll move to the executive director evaluation, in which case we will need a motion to go into executive session. Um, so is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, one twenty slash two C one for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony or complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity?
The move to.
Thank you, Maura, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Hsu?
Yes.
Great, so the motion passes. Uh, before. Okay, we're back in open session, nine fifty PM. Um, there are no motions from the closed session. So the next item on the agenda is agenda building. For the upcoming agenda for the April board meeting, we're gonna have fiscal year twenty four board meeting scheduled. Bring your calendars. Um, transfer of funds to debt service and the construction improvement fund, executive director review, start review of the master plan, and strategic plan adoption. Anything else anyone else would like to have included on the agenda for the next meeting? Okay, then I will declare this meeting adjourned.